Okay, well. John, you can hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, good. So, welcome, everyone, to the swearing in of our new town administrator, Carol Richardson, and our new co-compliance officer, Akandu Uwaka. We are going to swear them in and welcome them to the team. They both bring lots of career experience to their respective fields. Really glad to have them here. I believe that with the experience they bring, they're going to help us elevate and achieve the goals that we set forth for economic development. We'll bring up Carol first. Raise your right hand. And repeat after. I, Carol Richardson, do swear or affirm
Swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance
True allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of town administrator.
Office of town administrator.
According to the Constitution and laws of the
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to have a spot. You got the wrong one. There we go. I.
I. Akandu Uwaka.
Swear or affirm.
Do swear and affirm
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
And I will be truthful and bear allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and the laws thereof.
And that I will
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligee and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of
I execute the office of
Co-compliance officer.
Co-compliance officer.
According to the Constitution
According to the
Constitution.
Code and Constitution of the state.
Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws of the state.
That's, we all get nervous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, welcome, guys. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
All right, so, thank you. So, our regular meeting will start at seven. We can't start early, so we will meet back here in fifteen minutes, or we can hang out here in fifteen minutes. There are refreshments in the hallway to celebrate our new employees. So, I am going to call this Board of Commissioners work session to water. It is Tuesday, February thirteenth. If you would do a roll call for us, Clerk Hudson?
Will do. President Franklin. Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Colbert.
He is on.
Here.
Commissioner Lot. Commissioner Pravat.
Here.
Town Administrator Carol Richardson.
Here.
Police Chief David Burce.
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Vaughn.
Here.
Town Clerk John Hudson here.
Thank you. We can rise for the pledge.
Due to the flag of the United States of America, which is the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, no. One of you might want to put the model. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to review of the agenda. Clerk Hudson, if you could take us through.
Will do. Business, A, board priorities for discussion. B, budget process discussion for discussion. C, record retention for discussion. D, proposed ordinance 01-2024 property standards for discussion. E, proposed resolution 2024-04 Marburg Day. Date change for board discussion, see resolution 2020-04. F, proposed resolution 2024-5 setting of fees for discussion, see resolution 2022-12. G, police office space for discussion. Six, administrative updates. Seven, public comment. Eight, preliminary approval of next meeting agenda. And nine, adjournment.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move into new business, but I just want to take a moment before we do that to move in and just let everyone know about our two new employees. Our new town administrator, Carol Richardson, and our new co-compliance officer. You can call him Mr. Up. And you'll see them around town. Please make them feel welcome. Get them away. We are excited with all the experience that they bring. With that said, we will move on to discussion of our board priorities. Oh, you're right. Just read it, and I didn't ask you guys about it. Thank you. Do you have anything to add? Changes? Okay. Thank you. So, we'll move on to the board priorities. We had a discussion on February third. Residents were allowed to comment on priorities that were important to them. The board had a discussion on priorities. And we consolidated this into three overarching themes. Economic development, sustainability, resident services and community engagement, and infrastructure and beautification. So, you guys have had a chance to read these, and, you know, we had a discussion. Do we, as a board, feel that this summary encapsulates what we were talking about and what our intention was?
The whole thing.
Yes.
Like, new and more varied restaurants with healthy options. I don't know if I care for the healthy portion. I just want, like, more diverse options.
Okay.
You know?
I think I threw that in there because I hear that from residents a lot, but we can just
It doesn't matter.
It can, yeah, I can just say varied restaurants because that can include healthy options. And it cuts the sentence down.
I wasn't sure if it mattered in there.
It doesn't. Like, a lot of this stuff, we talked about more stuff that fits under music. This is really the overarching statement. And if you can edit out the consolidation, please. Anything else? Or not?
We talked more, we talked about the, um, the businesses. How are we going to get them to allow us to bring business into the town?
The property owners?
Yes.
Yeah.
How are we going to get them to do that? And so, that should definitely be on here, a plan to figure out. Do we meet with them, the business owners, and find out who they are? Find out what's vacant in the town? What is it? You know?
Yeah, we have all that lined up. So, this is the overarching, and we have plans kind of underway on that. So, this is that we want to see, um... So, this is kind of a big statement, but the board would like to see the increased tax base that comes with economic vitality and grant opportunities directed to improvements in downtown property that is both privately and publicly owned. The town would like to position itself to purchase vacant properties as they become available and ensure that the community has a say in the design and development of these properties. So, that's kind of under this
Okay, yeah.
Idea. And we will talk about the plan more in detail from a budget and legislative. Because, I guess, we're in a work session, so like, from the budget end, like, you know, what do we, you know? We have, we have this co-compliance officer. He actually has a lot of experience with businesses and property owners who aren't maintaining their properties, all that. So, that's a really, you know, great addition, and so that's budgeted, you know? So, that's, that's kind of the budget end. Then there's the legislative end of, as we go through the property ordinance, and he has some experience in guiding property ordinances, that he can address the issue. Mr. Up.
Oh.
So, our lawyer is working on an ordinance, but she's going to meet with him, and they're going to work to really tighten up and make the fines harder, right? So, that is the legislative end. We have, we have four mayors than me have tried a less meat and ask you to do better approach, and including me and including town administrators, and that approach is not working. Okay. Did you have any comments?
I think this covers what we, a lot of what we discussed. Kind of, like, the term skirted around, but didn't talk much about in the actual goal-setting meeting was annexation, the plan for annexation before. Like, a lot of these things fit into what had previously been board budget priorities around annexation, particularly the statement on increasing the tax base that comes with economic vitality, but it's not, it's not laid out here.
Do you think we need to add a statement that's explicit on annexation? Or do we feel like? Because I think we did have it, it had its own category last year.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we're thinking of all of these things, kind of, also having that as a part of the framework, then maybe not an explicit statement is necessary. But also, like, if we can out as a particular item in our goal-setting meeting, I want to give the opportunity to make ten thoughts on it. It's a priority, too.
Do you have some thoughts?
Um, it makes sense.
I'm sure for that, but
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I know that it's been something, like, a work in progress, but still, it might be something that we can really focus on and hash out.
We'll kind of retool this with that. Do you guys have any other? Because we won't vote on it until the end of the month, so if there's any other changes. Does staff have any comments that they want to share? I'm supposed to give you guys that opportunity. All right. Then I guess we'll move on. And if you have more changes that can edit this down, too, just send them to me before the next, sort of, twenty-seven. Looking at the agenda, and it actually says, "For taking public comment on every item," which we don't usually do during work sessions. I missed that in the agenda published, but we should do it because we said it. So, if anyone would like to comment, you may comment.
And so, they're commenting specifically on the priorities?
It would have to be specifically on the priorities. So, Clerk Hudson, if you see anyone with hands raised online, let me know. Okay, we'll move on to budget process discussion. This is just kind of, Clerk Hudson and I were talking. We've got new commissioners. It's the first time through a budget process. Let's talk about the kind of how, what, and why of what we're doing. There isn't actually a, an insert for this. So, we've established the budget meetings, and we're going to meet and talk about the budget, and when the public is going to have a chance to comment. I'm working on finalizing, I got numbers from everyone, and then Commissioner Lot and I will work on the budget in between meetings as needed. And then, and that is because she's the treasurer. That's why, that's how that's set up. And then, when we come to the meetings, what we're going to do is you're going to, your first budget is going to be unbalanced and probably by a lot. And this is because, what I decided was important to me in this role, was to make sure that the budget was a collaborative process, so that everyone's aware of what's being cut where, what priorities and changes are being made, and has a chance to collaborate on that. So, when we meet next week, we'll start looking at what that difference is, start going through what we can change and cut here and there. But we will continue to do that throughout the whole process until we adopt it at the end of May. At the same time that we're working on the budget numbers, the general government staff and myself will be working on a budget book, which just provides a history of the town, how the organizational structure is, and it explains all the pieces of the budget. We were getting a lot of questions from residents. I had a lot of questions when I was a new commissioner, and so the budget book aims to answer those questions, so that if you are a resident who picks up the budget at Marlborough Day and reads through it, you can understand what the numbers mean and how they were formed. So, are there any questions about that process? In any way, you guys would like to be more engaged in the process?
I don't know. I don't have any ideas. I just think it's, it's something that I've heard before from constituents about, like, not really having visibility, and I think that takes care of a lot of that. So, I appreciate you coming up with a different solution for that.
Yeah, we've been doing it for the past two years, so I don't know. One thing that we might do, if you guys are game, is, there's a, Clerk Hudson produced this one-page document that shows when all these meetings are. We could, that's gone out in VIR and I'll say, but we could split up the town and hang it on people's doors to get them, you know, so that they're aware of that.
I find it's a bit just being on the website.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's the only, like, if it's on the website, it's gone out in VIR. It's going out in VIR, we see.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. All right. Clerk Hudson, did you have anything to add?
I can't hear you now. unmute that. Can you hear me? Hold on. Hit that button. Can you hear me now?
Can you hear us, John?
I can hear you now. Sorry about that.
Were you able to hear that discussion?
No, I heard part of it. So, yes, just the only thing I would add is that Tuesday, February twentieth, is the next opportunity. It's next Tuesday.
And we do want residents to be engaged. You know, we're making hard decisions, and the budget is actually, it's the plan. Why isn't this done? Why isn't that done? The answer is, it's not in the budget. So, things are important to get done. Make sure we know about them. If we don't already. All right. Any public comment at this time? We will move on to record retention. Clerk Hudson, I am going to let you take it from here, because this is our department.
Very good. Just so the new commissioners and everyone understands, the town has a record retention policy that is drafted along with the state of Maryland. And the record retention policy outlines what records we must keep and for how long we must keep those records. So, it is time that we, we put together a new records retention and disposal schedule to be developed and submitted to the state for reapproval. The last time the town had it done was in 2009, so it does need to be updated. The biggest update to the schedule will be the addition of electronic documents, so, which will have remained an issue with our state and national archives due to the ever-evolving technology that keeps coming out. So, the plan will be, I'll be working with department heads to review the current record retention and disposal schedule and discuss possible edits that they would like to see included in our town record retention policy. And then, on an annual basis, departments will list those records that have reached their disposal date and submit that list to the clerk's office, so that we can get an accurate count of which items need to actually be listed to be destroyed. So, that is going to take time. It's not a fast, it's not, by no means is it done very quickly, but we will get on it now with the hope of having it done, hopefully by fall is the plan, if we hear back from the state rather quickly. But that's where we're at right now with record retention. And then, we're also currently working with an outside vendor, Iron Mountain. A lot of our documents are currently stored down there, so we are going to ascertain where those documents are and hopefully get a nice inventory, so we can hopefully digitize some of those items to make things easier for accessibility for future.
And cut the cost of
Yes.
Maybe another interesting point that I didn't realize when I was volunteer, but the commissioners are subject to the record retention, too. So, I was wondering if while we're here in a work session, you could explain what documents that we produce, we have to obtain and can't destroy?
Any documents that you all produce are basically a record. So, anytime you write things down, you are producing, in essence, a record for the town. So, it's important and imperative that notes and things of that sort that you're keeping are basically bound to the record retention policy. So, I would say that when you make notes or things of that sort, you want to be careful in what you're putting out there, because of course, all notes and things are subject to the Public Information Act request as well. So, and I, you have, in the packet, you have the actual record retention policy, which explains what documents are, need to be held by the town that are permanent. You know, there are some that are two-year after approval of an item. It's, so it walks you through what exactly you need to keep and what needs to actually be destroyed after a certain period of time.
And some things, you know, we don't need to keep, and others we do. So, if you have questions, let's get with town administrator or town clerk. Any other questions or comments from the board? Anything from the public? Okay. We'll move on to proposed ordinance 1-2024 property standards. I kind of talked a little about this when we talked about priorities, because it heavily ties to our priorities. But we're trying to work on the property standards ordinance, first of all, to make it more clear, tie it to the county's code, so that it, we're consistent with what the county's doing. And it's also an opportunity for us to look at our commercial property standards and the fine structure around that, and try to develop something that is ensuring that private property owners, at least, are being required to maintain their property. That hasn't really been done. And I think that sets the tone for how the public entities are maintaining the property. So, I think it's important. We're going to let our new co-compliance officer put some feedback into that before we look at it again. Anyone have any questions about that? All right, public comment? All right. We will move on to resolution 20, oh, 2024-04. Clerk Hudson, would you explain this, it's a repeal, right?
That is correct. So, original, the original resolution that was written was 2020-04. The plan will be that we will repeal what was written in 2020. Now, going ahead, and we won't be setting it by resolution. It'll be set along with the calendar discussion that happens every January, as to when the board feels they want to be holding the Marlborough Day Festival and Parade.
But we changed when it was. We have to repeal this, and if we, it's not necessary to have a resolution for when we're having our Marlborough Day. Just let it be set. Are you good with that?
We didn't really change today, right?
Right, so we just have to repeal this to go along with that.
Uh huh.
Okay. My guess is because of My guess is because of, I'm, this was John. Oh, that's interesting. Yeah, I'm not sure. We, we can ask our resident who was on the board at the time if they know why, if you all are okay with me suspending.
Yes.
Okay. Linda, do you know why it was a resolution?
It was a revolution for the day it wasn't changed. That it would traditionally preserve it from year, then the day before Mother's Day. And who to change that date, people had very upset. And we decided to make sure that it stays on the day before Mother's Day. The last tradition. We have people that still took the date on the day before Mother's Day and say, where's Marbury Day?
Thank you, Linda, for that insight. Alright. And just to clarify, because this brings us up that we changed it because volunteers, um, don't want to volunteer the day before Mother's Day. So, we've had trouble staffing it. Alright, any questions, public comment? Alright, we will move on to propose resolution 2024-05, setting of fees. Clark Hudson, if you could introduce this?
Yes, in. Yes, in 2022-12, can, oh wait, did I hit the wrong button?
2022-12.
Yes, 2022-12 was written by the Board of Commissioners. It was, that's when you all determined, well, that board determined the fee schedule for the town. So, now that we're having this discussion of vendor fees, uh, the town attorney thinks it's best that we repeal resolution 2022-12 and propose a new resolution setting of fees that will include your, uh, discussion about the vendor fees going forward. So, and then, every January, you'll have the setting of the fees for the upcoming budget season.
Okay, so, right now, what we're doing is, we're making it so that every year we can speak about it and, and make, um, make changes if we want to, we can modify the prices.
We always can.
Right, we always can, but if we're talking about, if we're talking about it in January, that means that we have time in the budget for it.
Right, so that's what our new town attorney said is, we should really do this in January because then you know how to estimate your budget.
Okay.
Because you're estimating, uh, fees.
Okay.
So, we thought that was good advice. So, the fees are actually on the last page. And the reason this keeps coming up is because vendors, committees who are having events keep coming to ask us to change the vendor fee because it's too high. Vendors who are considering participating see the fee and choose not to participate. We still do have vendors, but hit that point, um, where we're charging an amount that's limiting how many people are coming out. So, I.
I think we should reduce it both by $25. Bring the non-resident down to 100 and bring the resident down to 75.
I was thinking honestly even lower than that just because I really wanna make this obtainable for vendors, mostly like small businesses that don't really have this sort of income yet.
Right.
So, like, if you were asking personally, it would be $25.50.
Do you want to throw a number, do you want, I, I have data.
Well, that, that's what I'm saying. I don't have an exact, uh, reserve to throw out. On, so in thinking of the numbers, so, against the, uh, Marbury Day resolution that we just. How we expect it. Out of town resident. So, if that is something that was festival at that time, uh, that should be taken into consideration. Other thing I wonder is what has been numerically the number of vendors that that we've lost since the increase in the vendor fee, basically, you know, how many we had beforehand compared to how many we have now? And then, what does that translate into dollars-wise? Do we have a higher fee that's producing more revenue with lower vendors? Obviously, we don't want lower vendors, but, uh, what, I'd, I'd like to know what the data is on all those different types of.
That wasn't the kind of data I had.
Okay.
Sorry. But it's a good question. I know that, um, for Marbury Day, it was maybe 10 to 20 less people, but then you factor in the fact that we had to come to the rain day. It's hard to pin that entirely there. With, uh, the Christmas town market, it was substantial. Uh, the data that I had is I asked other mayors what they charged. And it ranged from $0 to $75, but no one charged more than $75. And a lot of times, we're kind of competing against the other towns with these events.
I'm willing to go down.
So, I will say, I have two other kind of comments. One is that I, I like the idea of having, uh, town businesses and residents having a benefit with that price being a little lower. And then, um, we have farmers markets, the farmers who are bringing like actual vegetables. They just do not have the overhead to pay these fees. So, the charge that we've been using that generally gets them to come, but some of them still don't, is $25. So, I think that I'd like to add a third category, which is, um, I can't remember how to phrase it, but it's like, uh, farmers with non-improved, there's a specific word for it, so it's not like jelly or jam they made, it's.
Products.
Right. Food, and they get a different rate whenever they come. So, that might encourage more farmers to get engaged.
Yeah, I mean, we've had multiple discussions about having like a flea market, farmers market and something big and, like, I really want the residents to have that here. But obviously, we need to make it affordable for businesses that just don't have that overhead, like you said. I'd be willing to go down to zero, but I know that, that's probably not the best for the town since we are still trying to make revenue. So, with what's that happy medium?
Yeah, I mean.
I would say residents, we can go down to 50 like it was, and then do the non-residents 75. But, like, if it's a new business, we'll know it's a new business, you know? They, if they can submit documentation to support that it's a fairly new business, I mean, we should be able to, um, do a case-by-case and say, okay.
Yeah, but then we've not opened the door for us to be like asking for like tax forms and like, do you qualify or don't you, you know? Like, I'd rather make it like.
Stream line.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think, you know, when you're setting fees, you have to make sure that it is fair. But when you give into seeing between different groups or case-by-case, you can run into some problems in terms of fairness. So, you just wanna make sure the board is the same.
So, I was going to suggest a compromise between the numbers that I'm hearing. So, 30 for town businesses, 60 for non-town and 15 for farmers?
We're not gonna make any money.
Well, we should have tripled it definitely because we did last year. It's like, I don't know if you went to that farmers market, but there wasn't a lot of farmers there.
No, no, but I can understand the farmers market because that's like a unique type of, uh, thing. But the vendors, they come out, they make money, um, and I, I'm, I think that price is too low. I think the price point should be about 50 bucks.
I will say also that, like, the median income here is somewhat decent, so they probably can't afford 50 bucks. But. I mean, do we wanna do 40?
40 with 40.
And so 40 for in-town and 15 for? You know what I mean?
I had 75 for non-residents, but we can go down to 70, I probably.
And then, 15 for farmers. We're not gonna have the market fill up with farmers. And then, that allows for that, regardless of the market, what you're selling is determining your price. So, our farmers market doesn't turn into a candle shop, right, without compensation for that.
Okay, so we're saying residents, so we're, we're doing residents with.
40, 70 and 15? Are we all feeling like? Good about that?
50, 70, 15.
We want, we want to help our residents.
We give them $20, $20 off. $20 off. What is that? That, that, you know.
I mean, like, if I'm being honest, um, Karen, like, if this is the hill you want to die on, you, you take it. Because I, I think that the residents would be happier with the lower fees than a higher fee, but if you.
But we don't usually have, in my experience, I don't see a lot of residents that have, I know.
Therefore, the price shouldn't be a bigger deal because not so many residents are being vendors. So, they're not the ones that we're losing money out of.
Actually, most of our residents who are vendors didn't participate here.
Okay.
Thanks, y'all want to do 40, you're fine with me?
Wanna do 75 on the non, so that, does that, is that a better compromise?
No, and we don't, we want to do about $70 for the non-residents because those are the ones that really come in with their businesses and sell, they sell, um, you know, and we wanna make sure they're making some money too. And sometimes that's hard, so if we're, um, if it's too much and they're not making any money, it kind of doesn't, it's pointless for them to come back, try again.
So, it's 72 high then? I'm asking. Any, any healthier, anybody? That's fine, I just want, maybe you sound like you're saying it should be lower now.
The residents, I want, I, I want to be lower.
All right, well, then, let the residents be free then.
Well, in our businesses, hey, hey, I'd like.
Let the residents be free.
So, they should, yeah.
Free for the residents, make it free.
I don't think we should make it free for the residents.
$25.
I probably wouldn't make it free, but like.
$25.
I would go lower for the residents and then higher for the non-residents.
Okay, so.
25 is 75.
Do you wanna do 30 and 70?
Yes.
30, 70, 15, alright.
That's what we'll wrap up.
30, 7, what?
30, 70, 15.
Okay.
I gotta circle it over here, John, yeah.
The, the numbers are fine, I think. Evaluating this with each budget cycle.
Mm-hmm.
As the, the data and the numbers now of how many vendors have attended the past year.
That'd help, that definitely will help.
Are we actually getting the increases? And revenue? Uh, excuse me. These are great, and that is bad in our evaluation.
That makes sense. That makes sense. I mean, we'll have some, some data next year because we're starting it early.
Think it's worth also just kind of, other departments, I guess, mostly chief department that has fees on here. So, he can analyze that on an annual basis as well. Um, I don't know if you collect data or just use comparisons. So, and we just updated these. And the food truck fee, just to be clear, separate accounting, we can't actually go more than that amount. Any other questions?
So, the food truck permit fee, $50.
That's all we can charge food trucks.
So, is that fair to charge the, just putting it out there, so is it fair to charge the non-residents 70?
I mean, hence why I wanted it to be lower, because, because it sounds like a lot, like 125 in general is a lot of money, in my opinion. That's like five boxes of diapers for me from Costco. So, I think that's a lot. I mean, I think 70 is a good compromise, but it's still a bit of money.
I think people are more inclined to come out, if, if it's, at least it is lower than the 125.
Yeah, I mean, I 100% agree.
They'll take it.
And I'm okay with 70.
No, that's, that's, yeah, that's.
The food trucks are a little different because we let them bend at the pocket park three times a week. So, you know, it's not really like they only have the events to come to. Alright. Shin's public comment, any words of wisdom from staff?
When you have Marbury Day.
Um, come up to the. Get your name in.
Lieutenant Lawrence, uh, Supreme Grant Shire, what do you have, Marbury Day? Uh, your vendors, are you saying that the food trucks are not vendors?
Food trucks are vendors.
Then you, then you don't have a different fee. They're an out-of-town food truck, $75. And we're residents, it's a residential fee.
But I thought.
It is not a food truck.
But I thought you just said that.
A daily fee, like when we have them at the town, throughout the town, throughout the year. It's a separate thing, festival, and should be treated, so, in my opinion, okay.
But you said that we couldn't go up for the.
But that would be on a daily fee.
Not, it's, so you're saying on a special event, we can go up?
Like, while you did it, I thought. But we will look into it with the county, but we have to follow their regulations.
But a special event is $75 already, so.
So, that may be, yeah.
You got it, right, okay. So, it is.
But that's like if someone wants to have an event in town.
Mm-hmm.
Like, we've had proposals of, like, we're gonna do a road race or whatnot, they, so like.
Oh, okay.
For example, for, I mean, we waived their special event fee because it's put on by the fire department, volunteer fire department as a fundraiser. But if it was put on by someone else that we weren't waiving the fee and support, then they would pay $75 to have an event in town. Alright.
Did you have a hand online? Yep, I have a hand online, Joe Workley?
Hi, Joe Workley, Old Marlboro Pike. Back in 2014 and before, when Marbury Day was spelled differently and run by a completely different group on our main street, we used to have four classes of vendors. There were information booths, which were government and nonprofit, um, so long as they weren't selling anything, it was free. Nonprofits were charged $15 for a 10-by-10 space. Regular vendors were $40 for a 10-by-10 space. And then, food vendors, um, actually got charged based on what they were selling. But this was before the food, the county food truck laws, so, I don't know, but we used to charge some of them like $300 if they were selling full meals and drinks. And part of it was because of the cleanup and stuff that we had to do afterwards. But we'd have 100-plus vendors some years, almost 200. So, um, I, I think you should consider, not just is this profitable to us, but is profit the main consideration? Is this intended to be an event to bring people downtown? Is it something to try to support the businesses and let them be known by the people? You know, is it just to give people something to do, um, you know, or is it solely profit-making? And, you know, if it's not solely profit-making, you know, consider lower fees to try and get more people involved and more people showing up, and that'll bring in, um, more residents to, to visit and buy stuff and then hopefully justify higher fees in the, in the future. So, alright, thank you.
I think that's what we're trying to do.
I should clarify, it's, don't not touch the cost of putting on the event. It helps offset it a little bit, yeah. Um, the other thing is we do, government and nonprofits don't pay for, I guess it doesn't say that on there, but, um.
It's supposed to be like common knowledge.
I don't know why, but if we say never paid, do you know anything about that, Chief? You? Um, we'll see if, um, we should put that in there or not, but. If there's nothing else, we can move on to the next question.
Uh-huh.
Which is office space, and I'm actually gonna, um, give the floor to Commissioner Culbert to having the conversations with the, um, space. Sorry.
Um, so we, we had a conversation about the police office space. Space that we currently have kind of in the back of, of this building. Um, I find this stuff to be a, a bit inadequate for, uh, the officers that are on hand of, the handling of material. Uh, and just different things that actually make a police space a police. Last talked about it, there was an opportunity, uh, for a building, uh, on three oh one, right outside of town. That had a lot of the elements that would create more of a secure, uh, space for the police department. Uh, I think when we talked at the time, I think that we necessarily, we weren't necessarily in a position, uh, to move forward with something of that nature. So, but the opportunity has kind of brought it so back, there have been conversations about loan and whatever potential fee may be on that. The same issue still exists in terms of the police space as it exists right now, for that, I'm hoping your commissioner. Uh, where our police department sits currently, uh, inside this building. So the question, re-ridden, is this something that? Are going to pursue or would, would you be creating or getting that space for our police department? Number of factors that go into it as well, in an area that, uh, you know, is ripe for annexation when we get to that point, which is, you know. Talk of, where I brought up annexation earlier in the conversation. Uh, I've been out to see the space, I think, and frankly, you've been out to see the space.
No.
But the space itself, uh, is within a building that has a number of other spaces that could have potential uses for the town. In future, uh, developments or efforts. So, wanted to bring it back up as a point of conversation, um, you know, once we had the conversation, I think, uh, a year ago at this point. And so now that we're, uh, another year down the road, to kind of get perspectives on if this is something that would be of interest or to pursue going forward.
My big thing is, can we afford it?
That's part of the thing too.
Because that was one of the, the goals that I, I put, you know, put out there, that we need to put ourselves in a, like, in a position that we can purchase or purchase space if we, um, if we needed it, you know, and that's, that, that's huge. So I don't know that we've actually explored that option with the banks to see what we could possibly, the type of loans we can get. I don't think we've touched that, so that's the big thing.
Well, in terms of talking with the banks, I don't have, I haven't had that in, or had, you know, those conversations. Uh, but one of the other reasons I wanted to bring it up now is as we're talking about budget, how would this get paid for going forward? Conversations about what sources of funding, uh, whether it's the speed camera revenue, um, that, that supplement the public safety budget. Or do we have capital budget that at least would get us in the door for this and then create other lines of funding going forward? Uh, and I think there's ways that that is happening, and frankly, you.
I mean, we are gonna have to make some hardships, because our funds have run out. At the same time, we're in a situation where it's a recruiting problem. All of our spaces, our public work space and our police space are becoming a problem because people are coming and they're saying, you want me to work in a closet, right? Um, so I think, you know, like, getting this space is big and bigger than what we need, and we might not be able to budget the officers for it. Right, and that's kind of the challenge we're looking at, it's like, what is? How are we positioning ourselves, right? And then I should also let everyone know that the, anyone who has an annexation agreement now, communicating with me about actually signing. So I hope to have all our annexation agreements in front of us on the twenty-seventh. Um, so in that conversation, that, the where we're annexing has, Chief, how many cameras are?
Five additional.
Five additional cameras that will require multiple officers, I would say, to go through those. And those multiple officers are not going to necessarily be out, right? They'll, they will patrol as well, but they're also gonna have to sit at a desk. Right now, we can't put them at a desk because we don't have the desks for them. So we're, I feel like we're in like a chicken/egg sort of.
Yeah, cause then you still have to buy, um, a desk for them. A monitor and, uh, uh, you know, furnish a whole office.
Well, the speed camera funds can pay for directly, like, anything that is directly for running a speed camera program. So we're gonna hire an officer to run the speed camera program, and they need a desk and a computer and a vehicle or a uniform or whatever that is. That can all be paid for out of revenue coming in for speed cameras. And some portion of the rent on their space can be paid for out of speed cameras.
I think one of the other, other issues that we talked about was, even though I think Chief said they were like three minutes, three to five minutes away. That it was three to five minutes away.
He knows the exact.
I knew, it was still, I think it was.
They're police officers.
Yeah, well, I knew it was about three minutes, but it was still a concern, would it not be in, in the town? I know it's close, um, but that was a nightmare concern that it wasn't in the town. And is it, when we do annex, is it positioned where, you know? Yeah, is it not, is it like where we're getting annexed?
It's like, so, is it three minutes from the new annexation area too, cause you come up the other way, or no?
Three minutes from, making it right out of the building on three oh one, two roads, intersection road. So, it's literally behind the house of the cell, you know, on two roads. So if you were to go, you could almost draw a straight line from here to there. Have to go through the woods, over the houses, and it's there. So it actually backs up to a street that's off of Waynesburg Road, this one. So the owners also said that if we did this deal, they would be signing in for annexation, even though we're not touching. They would sign the annexation agreement.
And then we just have to pull.
Right, once we got the lines to line up, they would already be ready to go.
How many, um, officers are we looking to bring in?
So, we were just kind of casually ta, starting to talk about this, but I don't know how many officers you need for five cameras.
So.
And for the area.
It's not necessarily the camera, it's just overall responsibility that town needs, as well, current town as well as annexation area. So, since I've been here, you know, we need an evening shift, we need a weekend shift. I can't do that if we don't have people.
So they're, okay, so they're not only going to be dealing with the cameras, but they're going to be dealing, patrolling the area?
Yeah.
Okay.
But in order for the funding to come from speed camera, they do have to spend.
So you have to spend.
Time on the speed camera.
So Sarah, um, is, have we spoken to anybody here in the court at all to see if there's like space that they'd be willing to rent, lend?
So the, the problem with that is that they're using, the county space is being used for county security, right, function. And even though it's our police department, they don't want us in there, right? Like, if I go to the cab and say, hey, I'm the mayor, I just wanna, you know, they won't let me in. General has passed a security day. Um, so for their security and to control their security and because of who they have in the cab, they're not going to use that space. And there aren't really spaces in town, even in the annexation area, it doesn't really have an existing space. Um, a couple of other towns are building new police or public work departments, and they are six to ten.
So can this building house both the police department and?
Not currently.
Director Vaughn's, uh, staff? Because that would be ideal.
Right, not currently, because of how the security would need to be set up. Director Vaughn's staff can't be having to come through, like, all the security or go into a waiting room with, where people are being checked in or having this report.
No, but it's not, it's, it's, but most buildings have more than one entrance and exit. So is it a way that we can set it up? Cause it would make sense to get a place where they both can benefit, both departments can benefit, and we're spending less of a.
But why couldn't we put them where the police are now? Like, is that also?
They have a.
How about the same size as your current spot or smaller?
Well, you, they couldn't have both spots?
Hmm, they can, and they, do you want to explain the needs of your crew, actually?
The, the problem that we have currently is we need more shopping, you know, yard space. Um, as far as the offices go, yes, the area back there would work. For where we are now, we share the driveway with the daycare, we have little kids running around our marsh trucks, things like that, so that is our need right now.
But there's.
The county.
Oh, okay.
Right on the, uh, uh, county courthouse parking lot.
Yeah.
So I don't think that that space lends itself to the, to the yard or the bay area that we would need.
All right.
I encourage you, if you have not been to the public work yard, go to the public work yard. It is not an okay situation. Um, that said, the space, okay, so the, the building that we're talking about is a large building. And there is one office space that has access from the parking lot that we're looking at.
Another question, if we got that building, would he be able to have a holding sale there? I mean, like.
Well, hang on a second, let me finish the first question.
Okay.
Which is, there are, on opposite the hall, there's like these bays with doors and, you know, things that could be theoretically used for shop. Are the doors big enough?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But there's space over there, but right now it's being rented by other people, so we can't have it. But there is kind of a hope and, and discussions saying, hey, if we're renting the space, maybe, um, the top of your list to purchase this space. When you're ready to sell it, or when we're ready to buy it. And it is a good space for all of that in the long term. Um, and I think kind of to provide a public works example, when southern states went out across three oh one, town wasn't positioned to purchase that. And it's honestly like an ideal public works situation. Um, and it's John Newland, and so it's not gonna be a public work yard. But some of it is, there's just, there's not a ton of real estate, building something new is extremely expensive. And the proximity of this, it's not making it hard for police to get here in a timely fashion, they're mostly patrolling anyway.
Yeah, couple of other things on that, and I know, this is for that. If there was a possibility on the cap, one of, one of the things I think about too, is one, had varying to no success with county buildings as it stands right now. But also, if we're looking at economic development of downtown area, well, since Chief, I don't know if I would want a police department to be kind of the, you know. I mean, we, we have the courthouse, we have everything related to the courthouse, the law offices, they're already downtown, if we're looking.
I think what you're saying, you want to bring businesses in, not the police department having a big old building.
Big presence.
I can, I can, I can, I can see that, because, yeah, it's not gonna be inviting.
Yeah.
You know, I agree with that too, it won't be inviting if, you know, you want to come down and hang out, or say, yeah, I would rather have a business there. Rather than the police, uh, department.
So what are the choices, are, are there, besides something that's close proximity? There isn't any, is it?
No, both of, both of our department heads have, keep their eye out on potential real estate that might work for them. Um, and this is what's come. So.
And I, another thing too, is I think because, uh, you know, you talk about this like, we're the same space, the space is building it now, I think there's room, uh, to talk about negotiation. I think there's room to talk about, you know, maybe some longer-term plans to help with that negotiation, if it's something that we want to achieve. Other spaces become available for, like, like, mentioned, frankly, maybe we have refusal to that nature, uh.
Well, we're getting ten, well, in that negotiation should definitely, uh, tenant improvements, because we want to make sure that, yeah, that, that's, that's very important. So that we are, we're not spending so much money to get their space.
Right.
To a certain level, they need, they need to bring it up.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be pieces of it that, uh, you know, to measure the police space have to be capable, but to get it, you know, to that initial step, yes.
Right, and tenant improvements should not just be one time, so.
I think Chief can answer that question.
Sure.
So, yeah, so that is part of the agreement. Uh, so the overall discussion that we had with owner over the last year and a half. That has always been that they would bring the space up to our standards, whatever we want, if they would do it within reason. So there's very few changes that we need to make to the space currently, maybe taking down one wall and putting up two walls. They're gonna redo the paint, they're gonna redo the carpet, if we want all tile, they're gonna do that. So the town's output is zero, cause they're gonna bring it up to what we want it to be, as long as it's within reason. And like I said, I'm not trying to get anything spectacular, we just need it to be painted, all one color floor, and some doors added, and a wall down into the wall. So the plan has always been that it would be a five-to-ten-year process with the least, at least with the option to buy.
And how many officers? How many officers can you house there?
So, it's not, well, the space that we currently are looking at is only one part. The entire building is twenty thousand square feet, that's the warehouse space as well. So the long-term vision of this is actually being a police headquarters, so that you have police officer space, you have the holding sale that you talked about. You would have a conference training room, so like for meetings and stuff like this. The room that they have that we saw that's already improved by Dan's studio is way bigger than this room right now. So we could put probably seventy-five people seated in that room. We can only do thirty-nine here. So the room alone for that particular space, and that's just one of six spaces. So over the long term, it would be built out as the space has become available. All upstairs is only about, is the owner's entire suite, that they own the whole property. So they are looking to sell in the near future, so they like, hey, why don't you all lease this space? And if space becomes available and finances are there, you can take over the next space. So if so-and-so shop is, you know, we can then get first, right, refusal to that next space. And then over the years, we would eventually get to buying the whole space. So that has been discussed since day one. But the, the, the plan is having the short process at that time, because currently, if we hired three more people, we have no more space. Answer the question about the building being outside the town, gentlemen, the owners have already said, we will sign. That's, that's not an issue, we just want somebody stable, because as you know, like in DC, most business. most business, office businesses, office buildings are sitting vacant. They want somebody that's, and they eventually will sell and going about their business. So the plan is long-term, the plan is to build out and it would be a police headquarters eventual. So it would be in town, it would just annex around it because they were already signed in. So obviously we can't sign, we can't annex it until they, you know, we come up to, to them, but they're already ready to do it today. They said eight months ago when we talked about, that's what you want to assign. So it's a long-term project, it's not something that's going to be overnight. And even if they sign, if we signed the agreement today, we still wouldn't be able to move in four to six months because they got to make the improvements. They already said that, don't think you want to move in within four months. So they're going to make the improvements as long as it's within reason. Commissioner Covert has spoken with them about the price, it has come down tremendously. So the speed camera part is part of the overall financing. So we could finance this with the speed cameras. Annexation goes through, that just adds on to it. Because right now, when we originally did the annexation proposal and we did a speed camera proposal, it was supposed to be seven cameras. Since we haven't annexed, that's why we only have four.
Well, I just feel like we're at a standstill period, so we have to do something. We have to do something either way, whether people like it or not, at the end of the day, we have to do something. Um, Director Bond needs your space, you do need more space. At the end of the day, it has to happen at some point unless we're just going to continue doing the same, same thing. And that's.
Well, I mean, I'm, it, it, I'm thinking about it and I'm just like, you know, that's the whole idea to purchase property so that we can expand because right now we'll just be the same, we're not moving. So I mean, I'm open to it. I'm open to it, I would like to see the numbers and I would like to, you know, I, I'm going to go visit the space, I'm open to, um, looking at it at least. Um, so I can make an intelligent decision, but so far I think that if we don't do something, we're just going to be, continue to have the same meetings, keep talking about the same thing and we're not making any progress. And that is not what I want to do.
And at this particular point, our office space has become a fire hazard. We have stuff stacked literally to the ceiling because we have nowhere to put it and we need to buy more stuff. So I will just give you a perfect example, a riot shield, we have those, or a patrol shield is what you all see on the news. Our officers going in front of individuals, a lot of times you'll see them carrying a ballistic shield. We don't have those. We have nowhere to put them, if we get them and we need at least three. And people can say, well, it, it's a small town, we don't, no, 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 it doesn't work like that. If, if they need and we have it, we should respond and take care of it, no matter what the police. You know, just like when I got here, the police cars were a shambles, we had to buy new stuff. You have to think about this stuff long-term. It can't be everything is today, 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 you have to think about tomorrow. Because we have had people as far away as Malton, William Beadys Road, come and ask the villages, all ask about annexation. So it's up to the board to say yes or no about when these people come. So if they come and we're not prepared, that's on us. So for me, I'm just trying to put the police department in a position to be ready to take care of whatever happens. Sure that's what Director Bond wants and we can't do it in these little teeny spaces. We've been telling people for more than two years, we're going to annex, we're going to change, we're going to do this, and we're not doing it, they're leaving. So when someone comes here to say, hey, can I look at your office? And they look at it and like, I'm not coming to work in this. Now, I'm sure when you all go to work, you have a desk that locks. None of the desks back there locked except for the ones that are in my office that I had to purchase when I got here. There were no locking desks, who works in that type of condition? Anybody go to work and they don't have a lock on their desk? They have a valve cabinet? Hey, we don't even have those. So there are things that people look at, it's like, I'm not used to this and I don't want to work in this kind of condition. So it's not just about, uh, get something for myself. I mean, I literally worked for eight months with no lock on my desk. That's un, unacceptable because where are the personnel valves supposed to be? The only fireproof state in this building is the one that I purchased, there are no others. Why is that? Nobody's thinking ahead, so if this building caught on fire, everything would have gone. Why am I thinking about that?
I mean, I think everything that you're saying is really important and I, I think that the space is needed. I'm worried about like the money, like where is all this money coming from? Um, say like safes and locking desks and those are things that you need as a, as an employee, as a resource, sitting at a desk. But like, how could we finance that into building all which is the speed light cameras? Like I, I want to see the numbers too, like.
So I agree, I'm not saying this is going to happen, but what I'm saying is there have to be conversations about moving forward. We've been talking about annexation since I've been five years, five years. So unless the board moves forward with the discussion, we're not going to, like she said, we're going to just be staying stagnant, that's what it's happened. So.
So I think.
Just that public, I can answer the other part.
Wait, wait, hang on, I, I want to say a few things. One, um, we're, we're working out the final of the budget requests from them and then you and I will get together on that. So we can talk about that as well, we can talk to Chief about that. Um, and then we'll, we're providing you guys because you need your packet for next week. So you're going to see the numbers are probably rough right now and may change from when Karen and I get together and go through stuff um, between what we get and next week, but we want to give you something to start looking. Um, if the numbers really change a, a lot from when you first get them to when we adopt them in May, and that's the point for us all participating in that. So if we can work on the numbers, I know you were hoping for, you know, sooner, but like if we can work on the numbers enough, can you see if that's something that everyone can? Uh, yeah, the other thing I just kind of want to say because it came up is like for a small town and why do we need so much police? And I think the thing that really gets lost is that we're courthouse town, there's a ton of people coming in every day, they're coming in to go to court. You know, and it, it really generates a lot more nine to five or what time is court? So seven to five activity that is, you know, requiring that police department and that's a challenge that I keep bringing up with the county. Anyone else have anything?
I just think that we need to, you know, it's not so much as we trying to, um, just get a building. We need to get a building so that we can make sure both departments can have what they need basically. And we have to figure out how to fund it. Um, I think that we need to set ourselves up so that we can purchase properties because that is the way, uh, that's the way to go, I think that's what Bowie said they did, they, they took time and they started making purchases. And if we had done, not us, but previous years ago, if that was done, maybe some of the courthouses and all the buildings wouldn't be owned by the county. So I think it's, it's something we eventually have to do, that's the only way that we're going to spread our wings. That's all I have to say. But I do want to see the numbers and see how we can possibly do this, if, if we, if we could, how could we do it?
I think that's important, uh, Commissioner Lot, to your point, you know, we, 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 I've had the conversation about purchasing property. Or, you know, having access to, I think, to your point, all that has to fit into strategy of growth for the town. It's not just purchasing a building for the purpose of having a building.
Right, I'm not even.
I, I think this fits into that strategy, but this is something that we all have to.
I, I see that, you know, listening to the, as they expand and grow. I see if we annex, of course we're going to need more officers, of course we're going to need more space. And like Commissioner Lot said, you know, we can't, we got to move, we can't just sit here and just pretend that this is going to go away and just keep talking about it all the time. We've got to move. But like, yeah, like Commissioner Lot and Commissioner Pravat and Covert, like all of us, we just need to see how we're going to fit this in the budget.
It's affordable.
It's definitely affordable, right.
How you allocate the money.
Public comment?
My biggest concern is, um, whether the annexation income versus the rental space cost. And you feel like you need to build out while we're waiting for the annexation to come in? Um, but you have to look at what you're actually going to get with the annexation income when you're looking to, to buy another building. I, I've asked many times about the owns building and whether or not it would be available, the sheriff's department used to be there. So that was available at one point in time, the old elementary school. So I don't know where that is, um, and if we're looking into that. And I've been hearing that the Board of Education is moving out of the Saps building over there. So that would be another one that's in town and might be available and it belongs to the county and we can work with the county for those buildings. I think it would be cheaper if you were buying it outside of retail. Um, as far as us being a core town, yeah, we are a core town, but we were also at one time the county buildings. The county buildings are empty, so you decrease the number of people that are in the town. So you have to look at all of those when you're looking at going out and purchasing or renting and make sure that we have the income that the police department essentially should be able to support itself, what it comes down to. And that's what I'm, I'm hoping that you guys are looking at. Because right now they're budgeted at like half of our budget outside of the, the, the grant funding. And I think that's, if we're already giving them half of what we've got, then that's not going back into the town and the people. Going to police and we can't dispatch our police. So the only time that they're available is when they're driving around because they're not going to be able to, to do anything. I mean, when, that's why I, I always ask for the numbers. Why are we, why are we not saying how many that our police are, were doing versus how many that the county was doing? Because the county is doing three quarters of it, they're only working eight hours a day, the county's doing two thirds of the work. You have to keep that in mind as well when you're looking at budgeting a police around this half of our town budget.
Want to clarify some things. You, well, I know, I, I just want to clarify that we benefit from our police officers. And I will, I, I'll ask you for this number, so we, as residents, served by our police officers, we do have to be prepared to put money in for that. There, the re, there's a bubble of safety around the town of Upper Margrove. And it doesn't exist because it's the town of Upper Margrove, it exists because of our police officers. So we should be willing to invest in that, that is giving back to the community. Chief, I will let you kind of answer the data.
So to answer the question about the police department's budget, some of that money is the speed camera money that's actually allocated into the police budget line item, so that's why the number is higher. But it's not all just police funding, it's the speed cameras included in that number, so that's why you understand that it's not just police officers.
I, I understand.
The second part, but that's not how you state.
Don't, just, just answer the question.
The question of police department is we're trying to build something that the town resident asks for, we have to start somewhere. So, um, the buildings that be, that may become available, like the school building, it'll cost hundreds of thousands if not a million plus dollars to just fix that. Most of the buildings didn't in town and the reason why these buildings are like this because they have not been maintained, whether it's private or county. So whether we do it in town or out of town, or either way, we still going to have to invest, so we have to start. So my point is we have to start somewhere. This is just an open space that's available currently to help us get to that point.
So, yeah, I just want to.
And the speed cameras are going to help support that. And the annexation part of that is once we annex, we are waiting to annex. The agreement is off, the, the deal was we were supposed to add four additional cameras in the original signed agreement with the speed camera vendor. So technically we are in violation of our contract because we did not annex. So once we annex, the cameras will come, we just have to annex. So we've been out of, out of, out of, in violation for two years. And Commissioner, the board of nowhere know that we had the cameras correct. We did not annex, so that agreement is technically we're in violation, you didn't agree.
So we just, we don't want to get in a conversation with public.
No, no.
So, um, thank you.
The other part of that is if we did annex and when we do annex, I'm speaking into existence, when we do annex, how is, uh, public works going to be able to maintain? Because when we annex, we got to look at the services that we have to provide for the residents. And if they don't have the manpower or the space to do it, what are we going to do?
I think, I thought they were going to be able to maybe at least put some of their plow trucks in that lot initially, but I could be wrong. It won't be shop space, but you know how you can't turn around when you put plows on them and that kind of thing. Uh, but did you want to say something?
As far as the annexation purpose, um, going out towards three oh one, seven twenty-five, the main drag of that will be state maintained. It's just the, uh, actual residential areas, the neighborhoods that we would actually have to go into. Our, um, refuse contractor, they would pick up, uh, uh, trash as they do in the town. So that's not necessarily a lift on us, but where the lift comes in is litter patrols, um, street maintenance, um, bulk and snow.
I have a question right there. So I, some, I kind of recall something about, uh, if we annex, they didn't want to pay taxes or something like that in the beginning. They didn't want to pay taxes, so how, if that's the case, how does that affect the refuse contracts and whatever other contracts we're going to have? Does the town fit the bill, like what?
Not exactly, I feel like we're starting to get into a negotiation conversation that we should probably have in a closed session, so, which I, I, I'm planning to add a closed session on to our twenty-seventh meeting so we can talk about that there, but I don't want to. Um, I think we all agree, like, that our public works and police departments need more space. And of course, freeing of space for police would actually also free of space for general government, which is going to need it as well. So let's see if the treasurer and I can work some numbers with Chief and get them to y'all, um, to look at and go from there. Does that sound? Is there any other, do you have any hands online, John? Or Cozen, I'm sorry.
I do not.
I think we'll move on to administrative updates. Um, and so I will ask our department heads if anything has come up since we put the agenda together that you need to let us know about. Right, um, if public has any general public comment, um, we'll allow you to comment now. Hearing none, we'll go on to the preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda. Um, it's pretty, it's the twentieth, yes. So I don't think we need to, to add a specific item to discuss the police space because that's just going to be in the, item B.
I want to add something. I want to add, um.
I want to add, um, the cable channel update needs to be updated.
It, it does. But I don't, do we need to do it at the same, I just, you just need to remind me if anything's...
But wait, this, this meaning, so this is, this is a week from today, and this is specific to the budget.
Specific to the budget, right.
Right, I can do it.
Yeah, just remind, if I don't send them to you, remind me, and I'll send them. Right. This is, we're going to sit down and start hatching out where we're going to cut and what we're going to do, and, you know, probably we'll have department heads kind of come up at the table with us and talk through, that we've got something to go on. So if there's other things that are on your mind that you want to add to a future agenda, we can put them on the twenty-seventh agenda if you form out now, or we can talk about it on the twentieth. All right. Oh, this is the, the regular town meeting agenda so far. Um, so that's just everything we're going to have to vote on, and we talked about now. So we can add stuff next week, or we can add stuff now. Okay. All right. Um, I guess then we can move on. We've got, um, our calendar, our event calendar has been produced, it is out, it is lovely. There is actually a general calendar, and then there is a calendar specific to residents. Um, and so that's going out on the VIR. If you are not on the VIR list, and you are a resident of the town of Upper Marlboro, um, you can call the town hall or email info@uppermarlborMD.gov. Um, you have to provide your street address, so we can confirm that you're a resident, and we'll give you the link to sign up for that. So we look forward to our first cleanup, our first event is a cleanup on April twenty-seventh, and then we'll be heading into Memorial Day and Marlboro Day. Next, um, reminder that we're having an extra budget work session next Tuesday, and I think we're on to adjournment. Thank you, and is there a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Wait, okay, so Karen, Karen gets the motion, Commissioner Colbert got the second. Would you call the roll, please?
I'll do it. President Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot?
Aye.
Commissioner Pravat?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right.